Good evening and welcome to the November 21st Board of Selectmen meeting. Please let the record show three members present, and if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started, I'd just like to have a moment of silence for in remembrance of Lieutenant Jason Menard of the Worcester Fire Department. Under appointments and resignations, we have a request of Michael Messini to be appointed as member of the Industrial Development Commission. Sir Conway?
Sorry. Just say he's here.
Okay. Do you want to read it into the record, please?
Dear Norton Board of Selectmen, I am writing to the board to express my interest in serving on the Industrial Development Commission. I have been a Norton resident for more than seventeen years, since 2002, and would embrace the opportunity to help the town balance the desire to maintain its community character with that of maximizing employment opportunities and further enhancing the tax base. From a professional perspective, my career spans more than twenty-five years working within a number of audit, risk advisory, and consulting roles largely across the financial services and public accounting sectors. I believe that my experience will position me well to succeed at serving the town and bringing value to the commission. Additionally, I have experienced serving the community through a number of different organizations and affiliations over the years: Boy Scouts of America, Quaney, including serving on the Board of Directors for the nonprofit scleroderma foundation of New England. I appreciate your time in reviewing my candidacy for the commission, and I look forward to discussing my interest and qualifications further. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me directly. Michael J. Messini. Messini.
Messini. Michael, would you like to come up, or?
Sure. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
You're waiting for the brain to click.
So, interested in joining the IDC?
Yes.
Well, I've known you for a number of years. I think you do a great job.
Great, well, I appreciate your support.
Any questions? What led you to want to join?
So, I'm a former colleague of Ms. Daly, and she thought I would be a good addition to the town and thought my experience would add value to the community, so I thought I would step up and pursue it.
Thank you. Any further questions?
No, I just have one comment. So, Mike, you'll be the third mic on the commission, so your nickname's going to be Eminem, not like The Singer, but The Candy.
That's fine. We'll start with that.
Chair would entertain a motion to accept the request of Michael Messini to be appointed as member of the Industrial Development Commission.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Okay, we have a request of Sandra Alarhead to be appointed as an alternate member of the Industrial Development Commission.
Dear Norton Board of Selectmen, I am writing to express my interest in serving as an alternate on the Industrial Development Commission. Serving as a Norton representative to the southeastern regional planning and economic development district, Serpide, commission provides me with a great opportunity to learn what is happening in terms of economic development in the surrounding communities. Over the past year, I have learned about topics ranging from the latest news, regulations, and challenges from the Cannabis Control Commission, to hearing from communities looking to make broadband a municipal utility. In addition to learning directly from Serpide about the projects they are involved with, I am able to network with the other Serpide representatives, both during and after the meetings, to learn more about the various projects and challenges that each town faces. It also provides me the opportunity to bring forward concerns that Norton faces, to get feedback from Serpide and the members of the commission. I would welcome the opportunity to further serve my community and believe that I will be able to contribute in a positive way to the Industrial Development Commission.
Sandy here?
No, she had a conflict, but she's going to try to come later.
Okay, so Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Sandra Alarhead to be appointed as alternate member of the IDC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Under licenses and permit, we have an application for Christina Gagne for a one-day beer and wine license for a private event to be held at Everett Leonard Park on September 6, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. She's getting out early. Mike, everyone, looks like everyone signed off on it?
They did.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the application. Christina Gagne?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Application of Anne Dubuque for a one-day all-alcohol license for a private event to be held at Everett Leonard Park on August 2, 2020, from 12:00 noon to 6:00 p.m. Again, looks like everyone signed off on this one as well.
Make a motion to approve the application for a one-day liquor license for Anne Dubuque.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so now, I don't think you guys have done one of these before, so this is a bit of an experience. So, we're going to vote all the liquor licenses, all the business licenses for 2020.
All the ones that have been returned so far.
All the ones that have been returned so far, yep. This is what it looks like in the packet. So, the way we've traditionally done these is we each take a page. The acronyms to the right are, there's a table at the top of the first page. Okay. So, and what we're going to do is we're going to vote page by page. So, we'll leave each one into the record and then vote for the entire page and then move on to the next one. So, motion to approve the licenses of Timothy G. McCarthy, DBA Albardo's at 241 Mansfield Ave., for a common vic, all-alcoholic, a common vic, jukebox, and mass...
Sunday Entertainment.
Sunday, thank you. Sunday Entertainment for a jukebox. The Chateau Restaurant of Norton, Inc., DBA The Chateau Restaurant, 48 Bay Road, common vic, all-alcohol, common vic, live entertainment, dancing, mass, Sunday Entertainment for live entertainment, dancing. City Oasis Incorporated, 50 Pleasant Street, common vic, all-alcohol, common vic, live entertainment, dancing, five coin-operated pool tables, three video games, mass Sunday Entertainment for live entertainment, dancing, video games, coin-operated pool tables. NR Enterprise, DBA Cozy Beer and Wine at 411 Old Colony Road for retail package wine and malt. Team Norton, Inc., DBA Fiesta Mexican Restaurant, 175 Mansfield Ave., common vic, all-alcohol, common vic. Home Flight Norton LLC, 184 Main Street, common vic, all-alcohol, common vic, live entertainment, dancing, mass Sunday Entertainment for live entertainment and dancing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the first license?
Mm-hmm.
This has come up before. We had another establishment that was under the same situation, and their attorney, our attorney, and the ABCC advised until the estate is settled, it has to be renewed in the...
In the name of?
The name of the person.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we were approving something.
We have a motion, second?
We have both.
Did you second?
I did.
Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you, too?
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the 2020 renewal for the following. Zhang and Chen Incorporated, doing business as Jasmine Garden, 113 Mansfield Avenue, common vic, all-alcohol, common vic, live entertainment. Kelly's Place at the Crossing, Inc., DBA Kelly's Place, 292 East Main Street, for common vic, all-alcohol, common vic. Mackham Waltz, Inc., 363 Old Colony Road, common vic, all-alcohol, common vic. J. Laxme Corp., DBA Mass Gas, 62 Mansfield Avenue, retail packaging, yep, retail packaging. Michelle's Corner Store, Inc., DBA Michelle's Corner Store, 325 West Main Street, units 1 through 4, retail packaging, all-alcohol. Constantinos J. Babanakis, DBA Mike's Famous Pizza, 105 Ton Ave., common vic, all-alcohol, common vic. Northeast Properties, Inc., DBA Norton Country Club, 188 Oak Street, common vic, all-alcohol, common vic, live entertainment, dancing, mass Sunday Entertainment for live entertainment and dancing. Kival Cupa Corp., DBA Norton Liquors, 92 Mansfield Avenue, retail packaging, all-alcohol. 20 Broad Street, Inc., DBA Pine Crest Beer and Wine, 175 Mansfield Ave., retail packaging, wine and malt. NEHA Corp., DBA Trip Stop, 250 East Main Street, retail packaging, wine and malt. Mary E. Manchester, DBA Sportsman's Cafe, common vic, all-alcohol, common vic, jukebox and pool table, mass Sunday Entertainment for jukebox and pool table. Oh, dear. Lology Cupa, Inc., DBA Sun Market, 181 West Main Street, retail packaging, wine and malt.
Second?
Second.
Because you made a motion originally. I can't make motions, that's why.
No, no, I had to think about that.
So, this is, has to be roll call, so we have to redo the first page as well, but not read it all. So, a motion is second. Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Sir Conway? I two-vote yes. And back to the first page, we already read it into the record, so do we have to open and reconsider it? No, we don't. So, Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Sir Conway?
Yes.
Two-vote yes. At this time, I think...
You have a minute?
Mr. Conway, actually, do you want to move to announcements? Do you want to make that announcement right now?
Certainly.
We'll come back to the license here in a minute.
The announcement for today is the Festival of Lights on Norton Town Common. Come and be merry. Join us for hot cocoa, cookies, crafts, singing, dancing, and lights, December 8th at 5:00 p.m. Sing holiday songs, write letters to Santa, and see the common light up with a very special visit by Santa and Mrs. Claus, with special thanks to Bob Kimball, Charlie Garden Club, Norton Community Lions, Norton Fire Department, Norton Girl Scouts, Norton Singers, and On the Bar dancers.
That's a great event every year.
It's super good.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Conway. And there's...
Nope.
Never fails.
It's part of the same night.
All right. Competing events, Christmas is for kids, fill a truck, Sunday, December 8th, 5:00 p.m. On the Norton Common during the Festival of Lights. Please bring a new unwrapped gift to the Christmas lighting event for local children in need. Christmas bows, wrapping paper, and any new blankets can also be donated. Please help us fill the truck and bring the magic of Christmas to a local family, sponsored by the Norton Fire Department. Great idea.
Thank you. It's 7:15 p.m., so we're going to move to the fiscal year 20 tax classification hearing in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. Denise? How are you? Good evening. Do we need that?
You're up.
It's not working. Come on.
Is it PowerPoint?
Yeah. Should be, it was working earlier. Are we on PC?
Shame.
Let's try it. Yep. Thank you. Great, thank you. So, let's get this. Okay, so, tonight, it's going to look like that. There we go. Okay. So, tonight, we're doing the classification hearing, and presented by myself, Denise Ellis, Director of Assessing, and Board of Assessors, James Riley, Carolyn McCarron, and Cheryl Ann Senior. Tonight, it's up to the board to vote, make a decision whether we're going to do a single tax rate or a split tax rate. So, what would happen is you would shift the burden from the residential to the commercial, industrial, personal property. So, tonight, you need to decide if we're going to do a single tax rate, a split tax rate, also decide about a minimum residential factor, small commercial exemption, and a residential exemption. And there are five classes for classification. We have residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. And right now, for residential, we're at 82.54 percent. Commercial is 6.13, industrial is 8.63, and personal property is 2.7. Open space. If you're not familiar with open space, no one in the state really uses open space. We don't have any in Norton, as far as I know, and if we did have it, you could do a maximum exemption of 25 percent. But again, we don't have any in Norton, and as far as I know, there might only be one town in the state that does have open space. And here is just the valuation for residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. So, the tax rate this year, if you do a single tax rate, will be $14.81, which is down, last year was $14.90 per thousand.
I'm sorry, what was it last year?
$14.90.
And what change? Was it the levy or the total assessed value?
Well, the total assessed value goes up. Well, actually, they both change every year. So, what you do is you take the levy, divide that by the total assessed value, and that's how you come up with the tax, with the tax rate. So, last year, the average single family was 356,033. This year, it has gone up to 372,090, okay, with an increase of about $200 for the average single family. Commercial is going up about $2,100 from last year. And again, this is the average.
Sorry, Denise, is that the average assessed value for the single-family homes?
Yes, about the average assessed value. Okay, so, if the residential factor of one is a single tax rate, which would be the $14.81, if you were to change that, then you would have... Sorry, there's a, I'll go to the graph first. Actually, I should say, what is the shift? So, shifting the tax rate moves some of the burden of the monies, again, from the residential to the commercial, industrial, and personal property. It doesn't mean that we assess the, or we charge a higher tax rate for the commercial and industrial, and so the monies aren't going to change, we just have to shift it. Okay? So, if we were to shift it, so at, if we went down to 1.2 on the chart, and we would shift that to there, that would bring this, for a split tax rate, if you wanted to do that, the split tax rate for the residential would be $14.18, and then for the commercial, industrial, and personal property, it would bring it up to 17.77. And if you did that, you know, let's just get an idea, that would bring the residential taxes down a little bit, but would really increase the commercial, industrial, personal property up over $7,000. So, and right now, we're at about 17.5 percent of personal property, commercial, industrial, and we still have a lot of small businesses out there, so just keep in mind, it will affect the small businesses if you do do a split tax rate.
Would that be $7,000 on top of...
Well, it depends on what, you know, what their value is. So, whatever their value is, plus times the 17.77 will, you know, increase their value. But what I did is I just took the average, commercial person, which was 29,858, and if we did that by the 17.77 tax rate, it increases their taxes, let's say, to 7,087.
I guess I was, what I was wondering, is that over the fiscal year 2019 rate or the 2020 rate?
Well, the four, that would be, if we went with this, it would be the 2020 rate.
Okay. All right. So, it's not seven plus two?
No, no, we're all together.
Okay.
So, total for the commercial, it would be from 24,885, we'd be looking at 31,885.
Twenty-nine. It's going up seven from...
7,000, right?
It would be, yeah.
7,000 from 2019?
Thirty-six, yeah.
For 2020 would increase up to...
No, she said 2020.
No, so it would increase, it would, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Take your time.
It would be, so it would increase, if you split it, it would increase the, it would increase 49.73. I think that's how I did the math.
Yeah, so it's seven grand, because it's already going up two from last year.
No. No, to increase it 7,087 from 2019, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My notes. So, yeah, it would increase it. If you split it that way, it would, it would increase it over almost $5,000 to what it would be, with just a single tax rate.
From last year.
That's at 17.77, you said?
Yeah, we did that.
So, the 17.77 rate would be?
Yeah, so it was 17.77 at the average commercial rate of 29,858.
Right.
I think I had it come out to 7,087 for the taxes for the year.
So, 7,000 over last year, five, 5,000 almost on the, yeah, almost on the number from...
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
And then I just did a couple of graphs. Well, there we go. So, I just did a couple of graphs, just showing you how the residential has been slightly decreasing every year, but the commercial, industrial, and personal property has been going up, especially industrial, that's been going up a little bit every year, being to a pretty level. So, this is just a chart showing you that. Another pie chart just kind of give you a better visual of what it looks like. So, then we have the small commercial exemption. This is for properties, for businesses that have no more than 10 employees and are certified by the Department of Employment and Training. As far as I know, we don't have any of those in town that I'm aware of.
We don't have, we don't have any small businesses with less than 10 employees?
We have them, but it has to be, let's go back on my thing, hold on a second.
Oh, it's, is it because of the one business in the building cannot qualify unless every business qualifies?
That's what I'm asking. They have to be certified by the state to be, to qualify. And then we come to the residential exemption. This is mainly just for big cities, you know, Boston, Cambridge have it, though, you know, the towns, as far as I know, don't have residential exemption. So, the things you need to consider tonight is the selection of a minimum residential factor, and if you're going to grant residential or small commercial exemption. So, again, it's up to the Board of Selectmen to determine whether or not the tax burden should be shifted, and if you do decide to shift it, then you need to decide on what rate you want to use.
Any further questions?
Mike, I have a general question. I had sent you an email about the tax rates in our neighboring communities.
That's, I was going to go over that.
See units, please.
I gave you two, two items. One shows the comparison of the tax rates with the neighboring communities, and the other one shows you the same communities, who has a shift and who doesn't. And so, Easton, who only has 12 percent commercial, they don't have, they don't have a split tax rate. Foxborough, Mansfield do have a split tax rate, but they're up in the 20 percent range with their commercial property. And, you know, we have said in the past that until we get up in that range, into the 20 percent range with our commercial property, there's not a great benefit to doing the split tax rate. Right now, we're trying to attract businesses. And Rainham also, they're, they have a shift in their tax, commercial tax base is 24.5 percent.
You said Rainham?
Rainham, yeah.
Where's the 25?
It's on the back page, on the back of the page, it would show the commercial, industrial, personal properties, is what, no.
So, North Attleboro closely aligns to us at 17 percent. We're at 16.7, and North Attleboro has a split tax rate.
They do.
And the only one of the towns that has set the tax rate so far this year is Mansfield, and their residential will be 15.36, and their commercial 21.60.
And their, their properties are typically assessed higher than ours, correct? Like their average?
Yeah.
It seems like that's a very outsized burden to put on the businesses at a further increase of $5,000 a year, and you said it's not a...
For the reduction of the residential, I agree with you.
You said was on the lower side.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, and I think while we're trying to attract businesses into town to, again, get that, that split more equitable with, you know, other communities near us, I, myself, have historically been for the, the single rate and continue to be so for this year.
I don't, I don't think I agree with that. I see it, you know, Mansfield's not having any trouble attracting businesses, and they're at almost 22 percent, and we're, we're pretty low at 14.9.
And the only one of the towns that has set the tax rate so far this year is Mansfield. And their residential will be 15.36 and their commercial 21.60.
And their, their properties are typically assessed higher than ours, correct? Like their average?
Yeah. It seems like that's a very outsized burden to put on the businesses at a further increase of $5,000 a year. And you said it's not a.
For the reduction of the residential, I agree with you.
You said was on the lower side.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, and I think while we're trying to attract businesses into town to, to again, get that, that split more equitable with, you know, other communities near us. I, I, I myself have historically been for the, the single rate and continue to be so at the, for this year.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't think I agree with that. I see it, you know, Mansfield's not having any trouble attracting businesses and they're at almost 22%. And we're, we're pretty low at 14.9. And I certainly, I, I don't think that a small shift in that percentage would deter businesses from coming here. My concern would be, what about the business that are already here, businesses here that are small?
Correct.
But I don't know that we, I don't feel like I have enough information in here to really see the impact of that.
Do we, um, would we be able to see, so are you able to segregate the data so we can get small business versus average business? Because it skews significantly when you have someone like Al Nylam, you have some of the other larger businesses, it will outweigh the, the Bridgeds and the.
Yep. So, agreed, so, you know, that's just off the top of my head, yeah, we do have a lot of big ones. But, you know, then you have all the small ones, you know, just all the local businesses in town. I mean, there's quite a few of those. And I think.
So, what do, what do we think the average impact would be for the, and, and again, if you have to do some analysis on it to get us a, a firm number where what's the, so the average business under 10 employees, what's the impact going to be overall on them in terms of a percentage and, and a dollar amount?
Okay. Yeah, I don't have that information.
Yeah.
And I guess my next question is, when would you make that decision? Because we're getting ready to do the, the tax bills.
Might have to be before you do the tax bills.
Are you ready to?
Well, so what's the, what's the Board's pleasure? You guys ready to vote on this tonight? Are you, or do you feel like you need more information?
I need more information. I'd also like to hear, I know the Chair of FinCom is here. I'd like to know if he has any opinions as well, or if there were discussions within his committee that he.
Mr. Attandi? Please.
I have a couple of questions based on the presentation. So, you're talking about 7,000, but you were jumping to the 1.2.
Right. I just went towards the middle.
So, do you have to jump, can you have a 1.01?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can go anywhere you want.
So, you can go anywhere you want. Have we projected out, famous words for me, when we would get to that closer to 20% breakthrough? Is that two years, five years, 20 years?
That I don't know, but you know, we do have the Leonard Street project going in. That's going to add, and anything else that comes into town. But that, that's a big project that's going to be going in. So, I don't know if you want to wait for that project to go in and then decide at that point and see how that is, or? I don't know.
Is there anything that says you can vote for a split rate and keep them the same? So, that you have, that you have the mechanism, but you're not utilizing it today?
You, you have to vote every year. So, once the tax rate's set, it's set for the year, so.
Right, but.
So, there's no value to doing what you just said?
Yes and no.
What would the value be?
That where, you know, I've been in this town 28 years. My tax rate keeps going up, my tax burden keeps going up. And we're worried about the small business, but the small business is making money. I'm not making money, but my tax bill keeps going up.
I don't think the state allows us to do that, because when we put all the paperwork in for the state, there's a, there's two spots. And I think that's, it's not going to let me put that in there. It's going to have a red flag and they're going to question it. I don't think it's allowed at this point, because like Mike said, that we do vote on it every year.
Right.
So, you, you can't have, it would just be one rate. In our, in the system, it would just come up as one rate.
Right, but you're, you're basically saying, like Rainham, like Mansfield, like everybody but Easton, we have a split rate, they just happen to be the same.
But that's not a split rate?
Yeah.
Yes and no.
Well, no, it's the same rate.
It's the same rate, but you're splitting out residential.
Well, it is split out. I mean, there's, I mean, the, the properties are, the, the values are assessed in separate buckets. So, I mean, the values are split out, but, but the rate's the same. It's, it's a blended rate.
But again, that based on the presentation here, we were jumping to a $7,000 increase when it could be a $100 increase.
Right, that's the average, so of course it's going to be below and above that.
So, no, I, I mean, you could go to 1.05, which will not make an average of 7,000 increase. It could make 3,000. So, it's really, to me, the question is, do you want a split rate or not? You don't have to jump to the 7,000 and make it that much different than it currently is for commercial and industrial. You can make it a lot smaller, but still have it split. So, to me, it's really a philosophical question. Do you want the same, or do you want to now split it out? If we, if we can't really indicate, again, a year, five years, 10 years, that we're going to get to that magical 20%, then I don't know what else to say.
So, I did do the math on the 1.1 factor. And that shows an increase of $4,500 over the 2019 rate, so.
And a, and a decrease in the residential of 100 and, 115 bucks.
That's the 1.1 you did?
That's the 1.1, yeah.
So, I, I was looking less at that and more at the actual rate, right? So, if, and I'm just going to use North Attleboro, because they are close to us in the percentage of commercial. I mean, I, I don't know that I would even go that high initially. I almost find like somewhere in the middle, like from, you know, 14, 14.9 to like 15.4, 15.5. Like not a, not a big uptake. And I don't know what that would be, if that would be like a 1.05 increase or 0.5. I, I don't know what that would be, but that certainly would, I think, from our perspective of looking across at the commercial taxes, with the exception of Rehoboth, we're still competitive, right? Easton would still be higher at 15.96. And all the others are in 17.5, 18.67. I mean, they're high. Right, but I think it allows us the opportunity to have a split tax rate, reduce the burden minimally on residents. I think increase any burden minimally on commercial and still, still be below pretty much everybody except Rehoboth. That's my two cents.
I mean, it's, it's a competitive factor too.
Right.
So, if we're still below competing towns, then is a small business going to say, oh, you just increased my taxes, I'm, I'm out of here? Again, residential taxes go up every year. I don't know a lot of people who go.
Except the rates going down this year.
Well, your tax bill will go up, because your assessment will go up, so. I don't know a lot of people who say, oh, I'm out of here because my residential tax rate or tax bill went up. I'm, I'm not a, you know, I myself am not advocating to, you know, put too much burden on commercial or industrial. But I don't see the harm in a split tax rate with a very incremental difference. That's my two cents.
And, and I think about that holistically too, with, you know, our, the water rates are about to increase as well. Right, so that's going to be an additional burden. So, wow, and you're right, you know, that the rate's going down, but it's, it's still an increase of, on average, $200 a year. You know, so it's, it's not like we're staying flat even though, or even paying less, even though the tax rate went down.
Ms. Conway?
I'm trying to run the numbers in my head. I mean, I, I think long-term, we would all agree that a split rate is what's in the best interest of the town.
Oh, I agree with that.
But whether or not we're there yet, I don't think we have enough data to make that determination, you know? Like, the, the chart's helpful, but it would also be good to, as Renee's saying, like, what does it look like if it's 1.01 to 1.09, right? These, these smaller adjustments to see how that goes. And then there's a difference between the average assessed value and a little more like the, the mean assessed value. So, it, it kind of helps mitigate some of the outliers, like the Al Nylams and the other big dollar ones. I think to understand the impact to some of the smaller businesses that we have would be good. I don't want to stick anybody with an extra $7,000 tax bill, right? Using the example from before. But I, I'm torn on that.
No, and that's.
I don't think I have enough information to say, yes, we need a split rate now.
So, and that's based off of, that 7,000 is based off of the tax rate going up to 16.29?
Yep.
Right, versus like what I had suggested, much lower incremental? Whether it be like 50 cents on a dollar, 60, 15, 40 or 15, 50?
Yep.
So, is it, is it possible to get that additional data? I mean.
I can run, go run up and run, run the chart for you. So, you'll have the chart and like for all the numbers, yeah, I can do that right now if you like, if you'd like.
That would be.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah, because we do, yeah, now, it's unfortunate that we're seeing this for the, for the first time tonight and with the tax bills do have to get out. That's, so if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I can run up and do it now. You just want the chart of what, what I gave you, but all the numbers on there, correct?
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, all right, I'll be back.
Thanks Denise.
And if it's something that's easier too, to kind of categorize businesses based on like size, I.
Yeah, I don't think I'll be able to tonight, because I'll have to hear everyone at the board. These are all different. It'll be hard to do.
Okay.
But I can definitely get the chart.
Okay. So, the chart being the difference of?
So, I gave you, I just pulled out a few on that chart that I gave you.
You mean this one here?
Yes.
Thank you Denise. Peter?
Yep, I found this article that I have in my collection. In the current tax threat for Norton back in 1988, residential 11.45 for 1,000. Open space 8.59 for 1,000 in business, 11.20 for 1,000.
Thank you, Peter.
Welcome, right?
Okay, so we're waiting for the information to come down. I, I think we should get back to the, the voting of licenses. So, we're on page three.
Starts with Wendell's up top.
Yep. Ms. Dally?
This one mine?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion for the following 2020 renewal licenses. I gotta go back to the, we were on a roll with the abbreviations. Wendell's Pub Incorporated, 30 West Main Street, for common vic, all alcohol, common vic. Jukebox, one video game, mass Sunday entertainment for Jukebox and one video game. Wheat College, 26 East Main Street, for a common vic, wine and malt, common vic, live entertainment at the loft. Can I group these together if they're all common vics from this point forward? Okay.
Yeah, so.
So, for all the remaining, I'll talk about, they're all common vic licenses. AJ Stone Oven Pizzeria LLC, 288 East Main Street. Hang Corporation, doing business with bagels and cream, 57 West Main Street. Oxo Boxo Restaurant Group Incorporated, doing business as the best sandwich shop, 175 Mansfield Avenue. Coco Group LLC, doing business with Dunkin' Donuts, 103 West Main Street. Great Woods Donuts Incorporated, doing business with Dunkin' Donuts, 175 Mansfield Ave. Haye LLC, doing business with Dunkin' Donuts, 246 East Main Street. Route 123 Donuts Incorporated, doing business with Dunkin' Donuts, 420 A Old Colony Road. Jade City Chinese Restaurant, 63 East Main Street. FATO Incorporated, doing business as Main Street Pizzeria, 63 East Main Street. P&amp;D Management LLC, doing business as McDonald's, 175 Mansfield Avenue.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Ms. Dally?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous?
So, I am, I'm, oh, I can't make a motion. So, all the, these first few are actually Norton House of Pizza, 57 West Main Street, common vic. Speedway, number two, 2411, 125 West Main Street, common vic. Norton Subs Inc., DBA Subway, 130 Mansfield Ave, common vic. Swamp Donkeys LLC, 113 Mansfield Avenue, common vic.
Make a motion to approve based on that reading?
Mm-hmm.
And second?
Ms. Dally?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Do you vote yes, unanimous? Colonial Motors Inc., 380 Old Colony Road, a Class II used car dealer's license. Ed's Auto Repair, Class II used car dealer's license. 16R San Sette Street. Fogarty Enterprises, a Class III motor vehicle junk license at 97 Oak Street. John Freeman, DBA Freeman's Garage, 29 Ford Road, Class II used car dealer's license. John Freeman is on there, oh, no, John Freeman, DBA Freeman's Garage, 29 Ford Road, Class III motor, motor vehicle junk license. Midway Collision Center Inc., 85 Mansfield Ave, Class II used car dealer's license. Midway Service Center Inc., 92, that is on, oh, no. Midway Service Center Inc., 92 East Main Street, Class II used car dealer's license. Platinum Auto Sales, 145R West Main Street, Class II used car dealer's license. Quality Van Sales Inc., 349 Old Colony Road, Class I Agents or Sellers License for the sale of new motor vehicles. Senator Bus Sales LLC, 347 Old Colony Road, Class I Agents or Sellers License for the sale of new motor, motor vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Dally?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Unanimous? And then Trans International Autos Inc., DBA Route 123 Motors, 406 Old Colony Road, Class II Used Car Dealer's License.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Dally?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
And Lodging House, 8 Pine Street LLC, Peter G. Berg owner, 8 Pine Street.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Dally?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
I do vote yes, it's unanimous. Yeah, it's, it's clunky.
I didn't realize how many dealerships we had.
Yeah, just, there'll be more. So, discussion of fire department overtime? Chief, want to come on up? Absolutely. Can we move the mic? Shane, will the mic pick him up over there? Actually, I left mine in my car, so that would be great.
Thanks. Thank you.
This is nice, I wasn't going to let this go.
What's that?
I said, this is nice, I wasn't going to let it go.
Oh, thank you. I'll give you an extra one.
I haven't, I actually forgot mine on.
You need one?
Thanks, sir.
So, I apologize, I wasn't able to make it to your last meeting, unfortunately, so. I know mostly y'all have a copy of this.
We gave all the money to Chief Clark.
I mean, I think we should have been there. But I just wanted to come, come by and kind of go, what I was planning on doing is just going over it quickly. And I have a lot going on tonight, so I won't tie you up for too long. But also give you the opportunity to ask any questions and so forth, okay? So, if you want, I'll just go through it kind of quick.
Please.
And I'll kind of, we'll kind of guide you with questions after that. So, these couple pages here just kind of break down what, how our overtime is allocated. And there's, they have a chart coming up afterward too. But the backfill and staffing to cover contractual time off constitutes 70% of our overtime. So, that's filling shifts for, for sick time, vacation time, personal time, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, that's where, you know, almost three quarters of our money goes as far as overtime. Obviously, that's important for us to be able to backfill. Has a major impact on how effectively we can mitigate incidents, how quickly we can get to incidents, how many incidents can we handle out of time. And just last year, I have it in here, but last year, we had 675 occurrences. We had at least two incidents going on at one time. And that number just seems to go up every year, you know? I think it was just, just yesterday, we had five incidents within about an hour and 10 minutes. So, we had both of our ambulances tied up, two ambulances coming from out of town. And the fifth one, our ambulance actually cleared Sturdy Hospital to come back into town to cover that call. And I think it was Monday or Tuesday, we had an incident where we had four, well, at the time, we had four incidents going on at the same time. So that kind of stuff really taxes us, and that's where that backfill and that staffing really makes a difference on how many calls we can cover. Unfortunately, we can't predict when that's going to happen. It would be great if we could, you know, I mean, we just woke up for that, you know, a couple hours, but. So anyhow, you know, please feel free to stop me if you have any questions as we go through.
Chief, I actually do have a question. What's the turnaround time? So if an ambulance makes a run?
Yep.
I'm assuming there must be some sterilization or time between calls, or can they just go one to the next?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So there's a bunch of different factors that come into play for that. Let's say the average turnaround time is probably about an hour or so.
Okay.
But it depends on what hospital they go to. So typically, we'll go, you know, obviously, our primary hospital, we go to Sturdy. Probably secondary would be Morton. We also go to Norwood, we go to Good Sam, we go to Brockton Hospital. Excuse me, on occasion, we'll go to Rhode Island Hospital, too. So a lot of those, you know, the Sturdy and Morton type of hospitals are patients' choice, but based on their condition, sometimes it'll dictate which hospital we transport them to. So somebody's having a heart attack, for example, we're going to take them to a hospital that has a cath lab, like Rhode Island Hospital, if we're on that side of town, or if we're on the other side of town, maybe we'll go to Good Sam, because they have a cath lab. Two traumas, on accidents on highway and that stuff, those will go to Rhode Island Hospitals. That puts us out for about two, two and a half hours. When you have a significant call like that, like you said, the decon is pretty extensive. But short of that, it's on average about an hour. Once they get their report set and the ambulance set, they can clear. And now, we have a mechanism now where they can even clear earlier if need be, and fax their report back over, because you have to follow up with that patient care report. You know, illegally, we're legally obligated to do that as part of their medical record and so forth, obviously.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief.
Answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
So the next section is emergency callback. That's about 11.5% of our overtime. That's what happens to, like, for example, the two scenarios that I was just telling you about that occurred earlier this week, yesterday and earlier this week. Well, you know, everybody has pagers, and we also use a bulk text message app, like a group text message app, where we'll call people in from home when we get really busy like that. So if it gets really busy, we typically, when we hit like two calls going on at the same time, we'll call people in from home, or we'll attempt to. We'll put that tone out, try to get people to come back in, and once things settle back and we get back down to our, you know, our equipment back in place, and our normal staffing levels in place, we'll release those people. So sometimes, if it's after 6 o'clock at night, it's, they have, there's a two-hour minimum for people to come in, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So it kind of depends on what time the call comes in. Obviously, we can't really predict that either, but however, we are busier during the day. Six, probably like 8:00 to 6:00 PM is by far like our busiest time, Monday through Friday, so. But, so we also do that automatically. If we get a call that comes in, let's say we get a call that came in right now for a potential structure fire, or somebody had smoke in their house, that call would automatically go out to everybody, so that way we don't waste any time trying to get people in from home and that sort of thing, too, so. And I don't know if you had a chance before to look through like the staffing allocation and so forth, but you'll notice like our ladder truck and Rescue 3 in there, I put zeros next to it. I probably should have wrote in callback, because that's what those people will take. If we have a fire and we get people coming back from home, they'll be able to take the ladder truck and stuff, so. That's kind of how we staff those apparatus. So musculaneus is kind of probably the same thing with Chief Clark, but it's kind of a catch-all. It's a bunch of really low percentage items that, you know, you know, come together to make up, you know, that 9%. You can see for yourself, but this is like, you know, union leave, court time, investigations, late call holdovers. So if, you know, our shifts get out at 7:30, if somebody has an ambulance call at 7:00 in the morning, sometimes they get held over an hour, hour and a half, or something like that. It covers that kind of stuff. Staff meetings, public education stuff, pre-construction meetings, which happen quite a bit nowadays, specialized inspections, emergency medical services, administrative meetings. So we have an emergency medical director and an assistant director, and they're required to go to quarterly meetings at the hospital. What else? So tech rescue team activations would be covered under that. That's pretty much. Weather's also under there. It fell under there this year by these standards, because it was about half a percent of our budget last year. But the year prior to that, it was like 4% of our budget. That was the year we had a lot of storms and the wind and the trees falling down and that sort of thing. Bless you. So training's about 6.5%. Obviously, need to explain how important training is for the stuff that we do, obviously. A lot of our training, I know just like the police department, is mandated through state oversight agencies and certified agencies and so forth. So just for somebody to maintain their EMS certification, you're looking at probably about 50 to 60 hours per year, as you know, just to maintain that. With the refreshers and CPR and events kind of life support and all that kind of stuff, so. We do try to do as much training as we can on duty, but I'm telling you, it's like Murphy's Law. When you try to do training on duty, your probability of getting a call for some reason goes up like threefold. It's the weirdest thing, so. The last thing I have in there, I believe it's the last thing, is the fire alarm system, maintenance and repair. It's about 3% of our budget. The fire alarm system is, you know, you've all seen the boxes outside of people's buildings and stuff, and the fire alarm panels inside of their buildings. They're all tied and hard-wired through that fire alarm system that reports to the communications department, and then they dispatch us accordingly. So that's for the repair and maintenance of that. I don't know exactly how old that system is, but it's definitely older than I am, which is, I'm not that old, I guess, but. Long story short, though, it is, it's getting, it's definitely getting older system. It breaks pretty regularly. We typically overspend that budget, and I just found out last week that our fire alarm truck has really significant mechanical issue with a boom on it. It's going to cost a lot, cost a lot of money to repair, and that boom's actually 45 years old. They put a new chassis on it in 2006, and took the old boom off and put it on that one, and now the boom, the boom's broken. So we're looking at probably, if we want to fix it, at least $10,000 if we want to replace it, which is probably the smarter thing to do over the long term. It's probably about 40-something thousand dollars, so. That's a decision we'll have to make at some point, so.
Can you speak to, before we turn the page, please, second to the last sentence about moving forward, we should work toward a conversion to a modern system?
Yes. So-
What is that, what would that look like?
Yeah, so I'm glad you brought that up. So a lot of communities, all the ones around us, use a radio box system. So it's wireless. So you'll see a similar like box on the building, and it's just a wireless signal that comes, so there's no repairing of the wires and all that sort of thing. So with the Blue Star, what you guys were talking about earlier, they've actually been generous enough, we've talked to them, negotiated with them, so forth, and they've agreed to actually buy us some radio box receiving equipment. So this will be able to actually receive radio boxes as well as the hard-wired signals. So all of the Blue Star buildings are actually going to go on that radio box system, which is a modern, you know, type of system. What our intention is moving forward is that all new buildings would go onto that same system, and that circuit is already maxed out there on anyway, so it was either that we had to put a new circuit in, or they could go over to the system and, to their credit, it was, they took the more expensive route, because they knew it was a benefit to our department and to our town, so.
And I may be misremembering, but I thought that the move to the regional rec was going to take care of this for us.
So the move to the rec, what that's going to do, they're going to, just, they're going to receive our boxes. They have to buy additional equipment, because all of that stuff has to be redundant, obviously. So they're, I want to say they're a little over $100,000 of equipment that they're going to need to get to be able to receive our fire alarm signals, but that's not going to upgrade the infrastructure that's out in our, out in our community right now. In kind of what Staley was asking, so that would be, you know, hopefully down the road, maybe that's something that we can progressively look at working in. The downside is it's very expensive for a business owner to switch over to that system. You're probably looking at about $6,000 or $7,000 for them to switch over, so. And that's after I talked to the person and got them to give us a discount if we did like a bulk purchasing type of thing. So the thought process, a lot of other places have done it over several years, so they notify business owners and say, hey, look, you know, we'll give you five years to switch over, but at that fifth year, you have the option to either go to a central station, like Brink's or ADT or something like that, or you can switch over to this system, so.
So just for clarity, because you just said Brink's, so all the systems right now, they ring directly into the fire department?
Well, yeah, kind of. They bring into dispatch, which is office in the police station.
Yeah, sorry, they're over there.
Yeah, and then they dispatch out to us.
So if a local business chose to not have the tie-in, they could, and they just go with a third party?
That's correct. It has to meet certain criteria, in order to be code compliant, based on what type of business it is. But if they're required to have a fire alarm system that reports directly to the fire department, they have to meet certain criteria. So they have the call-taking company, like ADT or whatever it would be, they have to answer the call within so much, push that call over to us, within so much time and all that kind of stuff, yeah. But they can, they can do that, so.
Okay. Is it any cost?
It's a little bit of a delay. I think they might save a little bit of money in insurance. I'm not 100% on that. If they go with the system that's directly tied to us, because it's obviously, you know, you're probably going to save 45 seconds to a minute or something.
Yes, they would.
Yeah, so.
Is there any cost to the town?
To switch over, it would just be that receiving equipment, which, like I said, that Blue Star has agreed to purchase for us. The town buildings would have an incurable cost to switch over, obviously.
But I would, I would imagine anything for town, if we're going to do new, we would, we would do this. But, so the system that Blue Star is purchasing, is that, could, does that have the capacity to, if the entire town were switched over?
Yep.
Like, there's nothing more that we would have to pay?
Yep. Best of my knowledge, I can't tell, I'm not going to tell you 100%, that's not my specialty specialty, but I don't, I don't believe we'd have to purchase anything else. And that's where the rec, a lot of the rec equipment would come in as well. Once we have that one module, it's going to receive it. So we'll eventually relocate it from the communications department into the fire station in the basement, so.
Thank you.
The next thing, it's just a graph that I made there for you, makes it a little bit easier, breaks it down a little bit more. The rest of it's just reference materials, a staff and allocation chart for you, if you want to take a look at. And then at the end, I just put additional information, in case you're bored someday and you want to look up some more stuff about fire department operations. But there's a lot of really good studies out there. These are, these are a few that I found that were pretty good. They actually talk about overtime, and they talk about staffing needs, talk about efficiency, and a lot of stuff like that. The New Rochelle one's really good. I think that Ellington's probably the second-best one. I was just looking at one from Phoenix the other day, it was pretty good. This NFA standard 1710, so NFA is, excuse me, that's the codes that we use for the fire codes. You've probably all heard the name before. 1710 is the deployment and suppression operations standards for fire departments. So that's where they talk about response times, they talk a lot about staffing and that sort of thing. And just to kind of give you some, it's very difficult to meet all of the NFA standards. They recommend four people on each piece of apparatus, which we obviously couldn't, couldn't do. And they also recommend 14 people on duty to respond to an average 2,000-square-foot house fire. Is that, that's the national standard to respond to.
14 people for one house fire?
Yeah, for 2,000-square-foot house fire. And they have, I could show you sometime if you want to, but it's all broken down into, into what they do. But there are a lot of things at a house fire that have to happen. Obviously, you know that, but then they have to happen, you know, in coordination with each other. It really makes a difference in the timing of a lot of those things. So obviously, you know, we can't afford to have 14 people here, we all, we all know that. So we rely a lot on mutual aid to do those, some of those tasks, and incident commander that gets there makes the decisions on, you know, we know that there's, you know, five things that we need to do. We can probably do two, maybe three of them, depending on what they are, and, you know, their task was making that, making that decision, relying on mutual aid to do the remaining tasks or the callback, like we talked about earlier. So, but there's a lot of good information out there. There's this good study for NIST with firefighter efficiency. NIST has a lot of good things with fire behavior. FM Global has a lot of good things. Our insurance company, actually, VFIS, has a lot of good resources and information for fire stuff and safety and injury prevention and that sort of thing, too, so. Hopefully, that answers some questions for you, gives you some information.
I appreciate the report. It's a lot of good information in here, and, you know, thanks for taking the time to do so.
If I've forgotten something, you all feel free to reach out to me, contact me, stop by anytime.
Can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Because it might be in here, but I didn't see it. What's the total, total percentage of overtime against the entire budget?
It's about 16% for the, for the personal services. I have that written down somewhere, but I'm pretty sure that's what it was.
Is that typical, like, compared to communities of our size?
It seems to be on par with communities of our size. They all have access to all of their, all of their budgets. Through a lot of research I've done, I've seen them up to 27. I haven't seen any, I haven't seen a lot of them in our area. If, the information that I've been able to read, they show that, like, for a business, their objective is to reach 10%. It's not exceed 10% for like a, like a business, not a public safety, but like an actual business. For fire departments, they tend to reference, I've seen in a few studies, they reference 20%, so. But it's really kind of up to what we can all, you know, tolerate and make happen based on the risk benefit analysis, you know, so.
And do you feel with us being around 16% that that's meeting your needs?
It's, that's one thing that I think that we should probably, and maybe be on the scope of the meeting tonight. But one of the things that I think would be important to do is determine what our adequate staffing levels are. You know, and kind of come to agreement on that with the boards and the stakeholders and so forth, and then try to work to, to maintain that. And set a long-term plan to maintain that and to split any obstacles and so forth. There's a lot of good, I'll try not to, you might have to stop if I keep going. I did find an interesting formula. I have it in here somewhere, but it's a, it's a way, it's a nationally accepted formula, and it talks about setting the staffing levels and maintaining additional personnel to do that. So, you know, based on this formula, the coefficient's 5.2, based on 124-hour positions, so you multiply that times how many positions you want to have. So if you had, if you maintain seven positions, that would come out to 36.4. Obviously, we can't split somebody in half, so we'll say 36, right? Right now, that's about where we're at. We have 36 people, well, on paper. And if we wanted to maintain eight people, which is what I would recommend, we need technically 41.6, but 40 would probably be the number that would work for us. That would give us an additional person on each shift, so. And that would give us that little bit of flexibility with that, with that overtime. So if we had somebody out hurt or somebody off on vacation, we could go down to one or two positions and kind of stabilize that overtime usage and make it a little more consistent. I mean, obviously, we're still going to need overtime, even if we hired people, you know, they end up getting vacation days and, you know, they get pay increases as they go on and stuff, too, so.
Chief, not to, I don't want to open a can of worms, certainly, but in order to, what I've heard for a number of years is to get Charlie open and sustained, we need an average of nine on duty. Is that correct?
So, so I think it's appropriate for us to have eight on duty to run, to run that station. So right now, we have nine people, like I said earlier on paper. Unfortunately, four, as you all know, right, people at home might not, but we have four people that are out. We have, we have three on the job injuries that have been long-term. We have one person that's getting ready to retire mid-December, and they've been on leave of absence for quite, quite some time now. The long-term injuries have been over three years. They're both in the process of retirement right now. Unfortunately, that process takes a year, as you guys know, from start to finish on average, you know. So to your question, I guess, is, we have no shock absorber right now.
Right.
We're basically have eight people on every shift, so if we keep Charlie open every time somebody calls in sick, takes a vacation, takes a go-to training, you get the idea. We have to hire every single, every single instance. So that's, that's kind of where we're at right now with it, and it's, it adds up really quick, obviously.
So you're essentially running three short right now, and you have been for some time?
I'm sorry?
You're running three, three people short?
Four, actually.
Four?
Four right now, and for a period of time, for maybe about a five-week period of time, we actually were down five people. Since we had somebody else hurt, we were lucky enough to get him back mid-September. So for that first couple months, we were down, and then the other person took a leave of absence, so it was a transition there where we actually had five people down.
Then you backfill that with overtime?
Yep.
So people are overworked?
You know, that's another, that's another discussion about overtime, right, as far as, you know, excessive overtime, increase in injuries and mistakes and that sort of thing. The good thing about how we do overtime is it's spread, it's spread around. So I think if you asked, you know, the people next door, I don't think that they would feel they're overworked. We do have limits, and they can't work more than three consecutive shifts without, without taking a break. So there is some safety factor built into that, to that overtime. So most, I'd say probably, not to get stabbed at this, but maybe 95, I'd say 95% of our overtime is voluntary. So another 5% happen to be working, and they can't go home because somebody called out or something, so.
Are the shifts 24-hour shifts, how are we structured here?
So we do 24, we do 24-hour shifts. That 24 hours is actually broken down into two shifts. So our day shift is 10 hours. It's from 7:30 to 5:30. Our night shift is from 5:30 to 7:30 the following morning, so. The day shift's a 10-hour shift, and the night shift's a 14-hour shift.
Okay. But is it the same person that's working both, or?
Yep, 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 sorry, I know that's what you're getting to. But yeah, it's the same person that's working both. If they want to take the whole day off, they have to use two vacation days, same thing with sick time and so forth. And when I'm trying to calculate and project the overtime, I typically will use 12 hours. I just kind of split the difference, you know what I mean? If everybody decides to take nights off, we're going to, we're going to go, you know, beyond our projections. If not, it could go the other way, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mike, can I ask one more question, please? So I had an interesting conversation yesterday pertaining to the need or potential need for a new fire station on the east side of town.
On what side, I'm sorry?
On the east side.
Okay.
Is that something that you've been looking into, or that you feel that we would need? And you can say that you don't have an answer right now, maybe when we have further discussion on, like, what are your needs five years out?
Yeah.
That becomes part of it, but, I mean, any initial thoughts?
So I know Chief Schlegger had talked about that a while ago. Certainly, there's more development going on over there than there ever has been. I mean, since we've, since we've all been in town, you know, 274, East Main wasn't there, you know, Red Mill Village wasn't there, the industrial parks coming, you know, all that kind of stuff. Our busiest area of town, like unequivocally, is from, from the town line to Mansfield to Totten. So north and south town boundaries, from Mansfield Avenue to the Washingtons, inclusive of the Washingtons. That's by far our busiest, our busiest area. You know, a station over there would be great. It's right near the highway, but the station's a two-minute drive from where London Street is. So I mean, how much are you really saving to put a, to put a station over there, you know?
Most of the new construction down in that area has sprinklers, especially the businesses, 274 East Main Street.
And I think the, gee, I just lost my train- And I think the, gee, I just lost my train of thought, but the other thing to think about is, doing some research previously, you know, if you take from here, and this is another way to upgrade our software to be able to run reports and, you know, keep data good and all that kind of stuff, but from here to the furthest east parts of town, about seven minutes' drive. The furthest west parts of town, I mean, I'm talking way out, like East Hodges and Richardson Avenue and stuff, about eleven minutes, so.
So, that's where you focus more?
It's hard to say, I mean, yeah. So, this is definitely the busiest area, it would be great to have a station over there. Station one's not in the best, definitely not in the best spot, you know, it's further away, and that's gonna help the East Hodges, West Hodges, those, those people, but it's, it's not our busiest area either. So, it's kind of a, it's kind of a toss-up, you have to kind of contemplate pros and cons. Ideally, I'd love to see us do a study, you know, a needs assessment study, you know, for, for staffing, stations, you know, obviously we're not gonna be able to do everything that they recommend, but that'll give us a good objective, you know, look into the future, and, you know, do some strategic planning moving forward.
Did you ask for any money for that?
I'm sorry?
Did you ask for any money?
No, can I, should I? I don't know how much it is.
Please do. Go see Pemcon first. Yeah, with units.
Just one thing with the overtime, I don't know if you know or not, but overtime isn't pensionable, so any of the money that people make on overtime doesn't count towards their retirement, so.
Really?
Yeah.
That's kind of crappy.
Yeah.
Aren't you glad you just heard that?
Okay, thanks Chief, appreciate it, yep.
All right, thank you for your time, have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Denise, Denise Beck?
Oh, wow. My seventeen, I like it.
There you go.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, I just need some guidance at what we're looking at.
Okay, so, what you're looking at, this is the chart, tax rate options and shifts. So, if you look on the left-hand side, CIP shift, that's, you know, you want one-point-one, one-point-ten, all the way down, okay? Then you're gonna go over to the far end, where it says estimated tax rates, and that's gonna give you your breakdown. It's gonna give you your residential, it's gonna give you your commercial, industrial, and personal property.
Okay, so, so just as an example, but midway down where it's fifteen-point-four-eight, I can't do this without some sort of.
So, if you go down to the, to the left-hand side, say you went to one-point-zero-five, and you go straight across, so that's gonna bring the residential rate to fourteen-sixty-four, and the commercial, industrial, personal property to fifteen-sixty-two.
That's on the one-point-oh-six?
That's at the one-point.
One-point-five, oh-five. Boy, it's hard to look at across all this.
Yeah, I know, it's a big sheet. And this gives you every possible scenario, you know, wherever tax rate you want it to go with. Probably could have folded it for you, it'd be easier to read.
I think this is great.
This is, thank you.
Want to take a look at this? No, but I can, I can look at Jack's, right, you don't mind, do you?
Jerry means Karen. Forintically doing math here?
So, for every tenth of a, hundredth of a point, it goes up, two-fifty.
Two-hundred-and-fifty?
Yeah. Ish, and then.
That value right there.
That one?
Mm-hmm. Want to come huddle over a sheet with a lot of numbers?
No, we can, you know, whatever you guys want to make a motion on.
So, just by looking at it, every hundredth that you come down, I think, right, looks like it drops the average residential bill by, call it eleven dollars on average, and raises the commercial by about two-fifty, so.
Yeah, you know, I just don't think at this point the, the lift is worth the burden.
Yeah. I think it would have been nice to have.
So, the lift on the residential is worth the burden placed on the transfer to the commercial?
So, the, the transfer is two-fifty, right, for every?
Additional, yeah.
Tenth or?
Per hundredth.
Hundredth?
Per hundredth. So, if we gave it, moved it to one-point-oh-one, it would go up two-hundred-and-fifty dollars more than the present average.
For the residential savings of eleven?
Correct.
Six, eight, ten. So, one thousand per, is that a fifteen?
Yeah.
Twenty, thirty-five, forty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
So, a thousand increase on the commercial side, and a fifty-dollar savings on the residential side.
It's like a twenty-to-one shift.
Shift.
So, I mean, I, given that, it's, it seems like less of a burden for the commercial, I, I'm still in favor of a, of a split. I think it's, you know, and again, I'm looking across the communities, like I, I think it's, it's in our best interest to do a split, I think that it still keeps us competitive from a commercial perspective, it's not overburdening, but it allows us to start moving in the right direction.
Yeah, okay.
That's my thought.
I, I don't think I have enough information to, to comfortably make that decision, I think if we had this a few weeks or a month ago, and we could have some discussions and work with Denise to get some, some various data points about the impact to some of the smaller businesses, like I'm, I'm almost there, like definitely, I can see the value, but I don't think I have enough in front of me to justify making that decision.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think that ultimately, we, we do need to get there, I, I just don't think that the time is, is right now, I think we're closer than we have been in a long time, and, but I just think that the, what we're saving on the residential on average is, is not enough for the, for the, the burden placed on the commercial.
Yep.
Now, anyone in the audience have any? Mr. Cross? I mean, Mr. Riley, Jesus, Cross Real Estate, I got a, I got a snuck in my head.
That's good, I need some marketing work.
Yeah, free plug right for the two people watching.
So, I am Chair of Board of Assessors, but I'll also speak just as an individual, so I'm not gonna make a recommendation to you, it's obviously your decision, maybe to help you with some ideas on how to make a decision. It is helpful for us to look at our neighbors, and see what our neighbors are doing. My profession, as he was mentioning, is a real estate broker, so people all the time come to me and they say, "Well, the tax rate in Mansfield is this, and the tax rate in Foxborough's that, and the tax rate in Norton is this." It means nothing, it means absolutely nothing. If your tax rate is fourteen-ninety and someone else's is seventeen-ninety, it doesn't mean anything unless you look at what the property's assessed for, because that number by itself, you can't say, "Well, we're, we're trying to be competitive with them," because we don't have any control over setting that, that's gonna be done by the state. What, what you have to do is multiply it by what the property's assessed for. So, our properties in Norton generally are assessed less than the properties in Mansfield, which is just generally assessed for less than the properties in Foxborough, so as you go closer to Norton, the values of the property would, would go up. So, I think as a town, we have to decide what we want to be, and it is, it is helpful to look at other towns, but let's not make our decisions on other towns. Now, somebody like Foxborough has a stadium, that's gonna impact their value. We don't have a stadium. Mansfield has a train station, we don't have a train station. So, we really have to say, what are we as a town? I, I think the suggestion of saying twenty percent, that's a pretty good range before you make a shift. Now, you just finished reading off all the businesses in town that have liquor licenses. Any of those businesses that's at DPA, by definition, they're, they're a mom and pop, and I say that affectionately, business. So, their house will be lowered in terms of its taxes, but their business that's right next door is gonna go up. So, that, that person is gonna get hit along the same time having a savings. So, I think we would have to look into the camera and say to all those businesses, if we do a split, "You people, we are going to raise your taxes as of tonight, we're making that decision." And I think it's valuable to say that I don't have enough information. I think, I think that's a good point, and say, rather than say, "Tonight's the night," that we make the shift. And once you do a split shift, you no longer are a business-friendly town. You are saying that if somebody looks at our town, they immedi, anybody business comes to town, they're gonna say, "Is it a split tax rate?" If it is, that means that you're trying to shift your taxes over to us, the businesses. Doesn't mean they won't come here, they're, they're gonna come here whether they come here or not, but you're just saying we're gonna be less friendly to you. The other part about making a shift is if you decide to come back, so let's say the homeowner gets only a one-hundred-dollar increase in taxes instead of a two-hundred-dollar, and you want to shift back next year, you're gonna have to give them a three-hundred-dollar increase to get back to level. Once you make the shift, it is, you can come back, but it's very difficult, and then you look into the camera to all the people at home, the residents, and say, "We're gonna give you a really big change in your taxes," up, meaning change, "to get back to, back to a level field." So, I think the thought of saying, maybe if we could do a little bit more research, see if we could do a projection on where, where we are with industrial, where we are with commercial, before we make that shift, as opposed to us putting you guys under a burden tonight to make that decision, and then have to, you know, scramble and say, "Oh, maybe we shifted a little too much or not enough," let, let's make it with some, with some, you know, good, solid information. You know, it is a lot to put on you guys on a short period of time. Unfortunately, the way the schedule goes, it's not just our department, the other departments are waiting for us. So, the tax, you know, collector, they're waiting to get theirs, so we could, you know, postpone this, but then we're gonna hold up, hold up everybody else. I don't know if that's helpful for you, or give you some ammunition to make your decision, but that was my objective.
So, when does the, when do the tax bills need to go out?
They, they need to be mailed, so there's a whole process in doing the bills. First of all, you make your cho, you make your decision tonight, I'll send it off to the state, they're gonna have to approve everything, and that could take a day, two days, whatever, how busy they are, this is their busy time of year. Once all that's done, then I need to start working with the water department, the tax collector, we have all the exemptions we need to get in, we have all the senior veteran work-off programs we need to get in, all of this needs to get onto the tax bills. That's gonna take us probably a couple of weeks to get everything straightened out, and the tax bills have to be printed two weeks prior, so they have to be, they have to hit by December thirty-first, which means they have to go to the printer by, I don't know, December fifteenth at least, but then you have the holidays, so, we're, and we're late this year doing the classification hearing, so we're in a really tight schedule right now.
So, so what's, what's drop dead? Because, like I said before, I'd like to see what the impact is to small business owners?
I don't know what drop dead is, because I don't know how long the state's gonna take, and how long, you know, because then everything has to be approved by them, and we go back and forth for the next few days, once everything's done.
And you can't work on any of the other things in parallel while that decision's being made?
No, because the way that, because I do the tax bills, and what happens is, the minute I start to do it, I have to get all that information in within a couple of days. So, it takes that long for everything to come over. We have to get all those adjustments in, they have to go through two different softwares, it's, it's time-consuming, so.
I.
I, I just, I just don't want the tax bills not to go out, because that will be disastrous.
I, I understand, but I mean, we, we always seem to be at the last minute, we're either making decisions or we're not making decisions because we don't have time, and we have to stop operating that way.
And unfortunately, the way this works, this is the state, this is not my office or anybody else or any of you, everything is on a timeline with the state, and it's all up to them, you know, for them to approve everything. So, and I've been working with the state all year, and every, and they've actually pushed our stuff through pretty fast, so, you know, it's not because I'm not bringing it to you earlier, it's I can't, I don't have the information to bring to you earlier, it's all up to them.
So, what is?
Everything is on a timeline.
So, what is the state providing that, that holds everything up?
All their reps to, they have to go through everything, all the different forms that we fill out, they have to make sure the tax, that everything's approved, you guys have to approve it, they have to make sure all our numbers add up, they review all our, our datas, all our values, they've been doing that all year, they've been making sure that we're all inspecting all the properties, you name it, it's, it's everything. And they're all different reps, everybody does something different. So, what I work with, I have one rep, the finance department has a different rep, so, and then we all have to get together and get everything going, so. You know, I'd love to get this earlier, I'd love to have all this information months ago, but again, it's like, it's day by day, you know, you don't know when you're gonna get it, and you just keep waiting and waiting for them to approve everything. So, and luckily, we have a good group, and they like my software company, and they, they put us through pretty quick, so, I mean, all the towns are to the last second waiting.
So, what do, what do we have for notification requirements? So, if we, if we asked you guys to go back to run some numbers against, with local businesses, how they would be impacted? Like, how, how quickly can you do that, and what are requirements to post?
So, if we could flush that out just a little bit, because I think what we're trying to say is all homeowners are the same, and we're trying to say businesses are different. We've got big businesses, we've got small businesses. I'm not sure how we're really gonna strat, stratify the businesses for you in terms...
I don't know, yeah.
I, I just, I was sitting in the audience, just trying to conceptualize how we can actually separate businesses for you to say, where do you cut off as a mom and pop small business, what's a medium business, who's got ten employees, who's got twenty-five employees, who's got a hundred employees? Is it based on employees, is it, well, I mean, these values are really based on property values, so you could be a, a one-person shop, but, you know, have fifteen acres of land and a huge building, you know, and, like, like how do we stratify, how do we give you the information that you're looking for to see what the impact would be on different commercial entities?
So, I, I don't think that we would need to tier or categorize.
Okay.
Those, like, I, I would even be fine showing all the businesses that we have, and if we have a split tax rate, what their increase would be.
Yeah.
Uh...
Yeah, using assessed values from the last year, it's just something to use as a reference point, and then we can go through, and if it's in Excel, we can.
So, help us what that, what that something is, so we can just make sure we can figure out how to, how to put it on a spreadsheet for you.
If, if you can provide a, a list of businesses, so you can strip the names out, but the assessed values from either this year or last, and then we can use this chart to understand what the impact would be to each business, and that helps get a much more granular view of what that impact is gonna be.
All right, I'm putting, I'm thinking this is a pretty big matrix right now, if we try and take every business and do every single.
No, 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 we don't, we don't want every scenario, right?
Yeah, okay, okay.
But, but I, I think we can provide you with some guidance, like, certainly...
Yes, please do.
Again, I don't, I don't think that we're... Again, I don't, I don't think that we're looking to go to, like, I think the sixteen dollar, wherever we were at the one point one, I think that that might be a bit too high. So I would probably focus on, you know, one point oh five, maybe do two clicks before, two clicks after. Right? So one point oh four to one point oh six. And we see across, you know, the, here's one point oh four, or one point oh five, whatever. We see across what that increase would be.
So I'm confused. Are you just looking for the average or?
See, averages are.
We're not really looking for the average.
Yeah, you use an average.
Yeah, because that's what we use now.
Right.
And we got small.
Well, and that's, and that's the thing, even with the homeowners, right? Like, we're basing it, what'd you say, three hundred and, three hundred and fifty? Yeah, three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. I mean, what, that might be the average single-family value, but
Right.
when you're looking at the high end, I mean, there's certainly a much bigger impact than, you know, a hundred bucks a year.
So single-family houses is a little bit easier to conceive. That if you're saying the average is in the middle, three, mid-three hundreds, and you're saying, "I got a really small house. My house is half that," then the tax should be half. If my house is twice that size, businesses are going to be a little bit harder to do that. Because we've, it's averages on businesses is really skewed with the big, big companies we've been able to.
Right. And that's why we don't want to see an average.
Yeah.
Like you said, strip out the names.
Yep.
Give us the businesses, strip out the names, and let us see what that would look like.
Okay. Let's see if I can do that.
No, but we also have, my other concern is that, a little bit of a notification thing. Because this is going to come straight out of the blue. So, you know, one of the things we could consider is making a motion on something tonight. And but, and then discussing this on a move-forward basis. I don't like making a snap decision, but at the same time, I also don't like pulling the rug on the people who are trying to budget their business for 2020. And then all of a sudden, there's going to be, you know, some significant, insignificant is, is open to interpretation. But it could be a significant increase for them that they weren't anticipating, and that could make or break a company's year, people's bonuses, people's pay raises, the things along those lines that could be more impactful than, I think, the savings of, you know, eleven dollars on the mill rate.
What are the hearing requirements? Right? This has been posted, so I would imagine. So how far out do we have to post a hearing on this?
Fourteen days.
So fourteen days?
I don't know.
Is that too close?
I don't know if the tax.
It's close because then you'll have to make a decision at that point. Then we'll have to start putting all our forms into the state.
Right.
So you might be cutting it extremely.
Again, we're late to the boat. We can't make an informed decision because we don't have information. And so now we're going to stay status quo. And that's a problem. That's a recurring problem. So I will make a motion that we keep the single tax rate. And I will promise the folks here and our townspeople that I will work with other people and we will get ahead of this next time.
Second?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
No, I agree with Renee. We'll support the process and spend the next year trying to study it and.
And what I'll do for next year is I'll make a note to get that ready for you. So you'll see the difference between the, that way it'll give me a lot more time. We'll have more, better information for you anyway, instead of just putting something together.
If you're able to do that even within the next couple of weeks, again, just to.
Yeah, just to get it started. Because I agree. I think that the thought of trying to get the businesses and scrub it out, so we have, you know, at least then we can communicate it that this may be coming and what the average impact may be.
And the truth is we're being deliberate. As to Renee's point, a lot of the things we do seem rushed. And we're kind of backed into making a decision that might not be the right one if we had all the information on. And it does get frustrating. And I agree, it's not a reflection on you if you need inputs from the state. Your hands are tied, so.
But I, but I think what we do want to go forward, right, we use the numbers that we have. You don't know what the impact's going to be by the state changing that. But at least we're going to have some idea of what those changes would be, given current figures.
So, I mean, if, as long as everything's all set tonight, they'll, they'll approve it at the fourteen. What is it, eighty-one?
Fourteen and one.
I doubt that they would change that. That should be the tax rate going forward for FY twenty. Is that your question?
I think Renee was saying for FY twenty-one, we can do projections based off of this year's assessed values and the rates.
Absolutely.
That's exactly what I was saying. Thank you for putting it more eloquently.
So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And then we need to vote on the residential exemption and the small commercial exemption as well.
And the residential, I don't know if you know what the residential, like Denise was saying, Boston has a lot of residential exemptions. Because for the multifamily homes in Boston, if you live in the home, you get a break on your taxes.
If you own and live in the home?
If you own and live in it.
Usually the big cities will do that. I know Cambridge does it, Boston does it.
I think Shane was talking about that earlier. Is that homestead? Is that something?
No.
That's a different.
That's different.
Okay.
So the idea is whether you're a, you own and actually live in the property or you're an absentee landlord. So they're trying to give a break for people that are actually living in the city, you know, in their homes. You know, it's a little expensive to live in the city, you know, as opposed to just rent out all your units and you live elsewhere.
So I'll ask the question, what percentage of people do we have in that position in Norton?
That rent out their property?
That live in the property that they rent.
We don't have that data.
I don't know if we.
Live in the property that they rent or property they own?
Property.
Property they own.
Live in the property that they own, but they rent out a portion of it, right?
That, we don't have that information.
I don't know if we even collect that. I don't know if.
How could we give an exemption then?
Are we allowed to collect that? I guess, I guess we probably would be allowed to, but.
Yeah, we have very few. That's why their recommendation would be not to.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if we had many multifamilies, things like that, then it would be different. But we don't really have that many in town, considering, you know, what other areas have.
And what was the second thing?
The small commercial exemption, which as far as I know, we don't have anybody that fits that criteria. Because they have to be approved by the state for that.
And that's the, under ten employees all in the same building?
Yeah.
Or everyone has to qualify in the same building? But it's, the exemption goes to the building owner, not the businesses.
Right. I read that, which seems ridiculous. So how do we do a motion? Do we do a motion just to say?
Motion to approve, and then if you're not for it, then.
So motion to approve, not?
Nope. Motion to approve a residential exemption. All those in favor?
What, will the chair entertain?
Chair, good point. A chair would entertain a motion to approve a residential exemption to the tax code, a tax rate?
Second?
Nope. I can't make a motion.
So moved?
Just the opposite.
Second?
No.
We always, we always move in the affirmative and then potentially vote in the negative.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Yeah, opposed unanimously. And then a small commercial, the motion would entertain a motion to approve a small commercial exemption to the tax rate?
So moved?
Second?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed unanimously?
Open space discount?
Oh, and the open space discount, again, as far as I know, we don't have any open space in Norton. And again, I don't know, the only town I knew that did have open space was Bedford. And I'm not even sure if they still have that. But the research I've done, there's nobody else in the state that has it either. We don't have any properties that qualify for that, that I'm aware of. So it doesn't include chapter sixty-one or sixty-one A B. It's besides that.
Which is?
Six, so that's chapter land. So if you're in the chapter land program, you have to have five continuous acres or more, depending on what you're in, recreational, farm.
Like a borderland or something?
Like agricultural.
Borderland, yeah, eastern.
Yeah, like one of the golf courses in chapter land. That's probably in chapter land, I would assume. So they'll get a discount on the land.
I was asking Denise today, when I went on to the state site, like, why do they have this open space? Nobody, nobody has anything under it, all the towns, when you go through.
The research that I did, nobody has it, that I could find.
So we should. I do think we should take action on it, just to make sure that we, just in case someone does all of a sudden pop up, so.
Make a motion to adopt an open space clarification?
Is it a classification that we're?
Discount.
Discount.
Right?
Yep.
So moved?
Want to modify it to discount?
Modify it to discount.
Okay.
You made the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I need to second it.
Yep.
A second.
Okay.
So have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye. At least we voted, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gus.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we, we passed on it, didn't we? So we have to vote to set the date of the annual town election, which is now Saturday in Janu, April.
Yeah, the town clerk recommends Saturday, April fourth. Because she feels that won't interfere with any holiday weekends, religious holidays, or school vacations.
So a motion that we vote to hold our town election. I'm assuming it's supposed to say Saturday, April fourth, 2020?
Mm-hmm. Second?
Motion in a second to set the date of the annual town election to April fourth, 2020. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Review and vote town efficiency, town efficient vehicle policy?
This is part of our quest to become a green community. This is one of the next steps. More or less what this is saying, other than police cruises and heavy-duty vehicles that are exempt, any other, as we have already with our cars, that any purchase we do of vehicles will be fuel-efficient vehicles.
I'm sorry, Mike, can you just repeat that one more time?
Yep. This policy would just reiterate that any purchase that we make for our vehicles will be fuel-efficient vehicles. And police cruises and heavy-duty equipment are exempt from this. So all the trucks that the highway department uses, fire trucks, and police cruises would be exempt, so.
Where would I find the definition for a fuel-efficient vehicle?
First page, under definitions.
It says combined city, oh, gotcha. It's just not.
You said this is part of being the green communities.
Right. So I can't decipher that formula. Read the definition, but. So is this, this would still mean that we would have, I mean, I imagine when we purchase a vehicle, the vehicle has to say whether or not it's fuel, it's rated as an efficient vehicle?
Right. It's going to show the, it's going to show the mileage rating for.
Okay.
And I do think it's going to be becoming more and more difficult to get non-fuel-efficient vehicles.
Yeah, yes. If you look at this other report that I gave you, go to the second page. It's easier because it's by miles per gallon, so it makes it.
Okay.
So for a four-wheel-drive car, twenty-four miles per gallon.
Okay, so this, like, at the bottom, it has the SUV, right? So this could apply for some of our police. For just because we have SUVs, but not the fire. I think it makes sense.
And also, the school committee is going to vote on this at their next meeting. And school buses are exempt because of the size of school buses.
Do you ever need to know how many vehicles we have that would fall under this?
Just the four that we have. And I don't believe the schools have any that would fall under it.
Okay.
They do have a pickup truck, yeah.
I didn't realize that a two-wheel-drive vehicle actually consumes more.
I don't know, just.
Oh, no, it's less.
That's less.
But not much.
But not much a mile per gallon.
Okay, chair would entertain a motion to, to accept the town of Norton fuel-efficient vehicle policy as written?
So moved?
Second?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And then discussion of Norton Need fundraiser? I'm not sure, someone want to provide some clarity on this?
So that, that was an email that came from Sherri Cohen in respect to the end painted on driveways in some of the schools around town. It's a fundraiser for Norton Need. And the question was whether or not the town hall and senior center would like to participate and have the painted permanent ends at the entrances of both areas. And then I asked if Jack had information to speak to this, or if somebody from Need would be available.
I can do my best to speak on behalf of Need, as my wife is a member. Yeah, they've been doing this for much of the fall. I think they've done somewhere about a hundred and thirty ends across town, including some of the schools and businesses. It's gotten a great response. And I think they're just trying to build a sense of community. All the proceeds raised, which I think is about twenty-five dollars per end, go directly to the school grant funding. So I think they've, they're going to give an update at the, one of the future school committee meetings, but somewhere around the fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars worth of grants this year alone. They're up over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the past ten years. It's all volunteer-run. It's a pretty great organization. So I don't know if the town hall and council of aging building wants to get in on it. I know Sherri said she would sponsor the COA. I don't know about the town hall, but I'll chip in for that.
Ditto.
Okay. Are there any other town buildings? Have we, fire department?
Fire, police.
Police, yeah. So how many town buildings are we talking about?
Police, town hall, council of aging, fire.
Highway, but highways. Water sewer, well, can't do anything there either.
Library's already been done.
Library's already been done.
I think three.
Three, so we're talking seventy-five?
Yep.
So can I be forth, chipping in a hundred bucks, give them a little extra, and split it three ways? Renee, you good with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so there you go. Don't need to take any action on it, so we can get it done and we can just.
Absolutely. I will update the boss and get him added onto the spring list.
Fabulous. Okay, under old business, we have a discussion on inquiries into marijuana facilities?
Yeah, just, we've had a lot of interest, a lot of people coming in. And I know that the IDC hopefully can work with the planning board. We rarely have to change our zoning.
Yes, we do.
And as part of that, hopefully, there's something done for distribution also. Because I know I'm expecting to speak with a company soon that is interested in putting in a distribution facility, so. Which, out of all the things, you know, if they're just distributing from here, not selling, I mean, it's the least impact I would do to the town, and you would get some, some money from it. But that's something that isn't in our zoning right now and would have to be added in there.
So.
To address it.
Distributor, would that require a grow?
Require what?
A grow?
Probably.
So then that they, concern there would be the fire hazard potentially, and then everyone around them, if it didn't get on fire, having a great night?
But I don't know that. I would think, I don't know whether you, if you had a distribution facility, I don't know, I would think you'd grow it too.
Oh, yeah, I would imagine so.
Mike, do you have a contact now? So we have not, so the IDC, we've spoken to a small business owner. We've spoken to a franchise owner. We've spoken to somebody who wants to do something completely different with a farm-to-table type idea. And we do have solar therapeutics on our next schedule.
Oh, good.
I'd love to get somebody from a distribution perspective, too, just so we can ask some questions, have some further understanding.
Well, solar therapeutics.
They're looking for distribution as well?
They're, I don't know if they're looking for that here, but they do have a grow
Okay.
facility and distribution facility, so they could give you some information on that.
Okay, we can certainly do that. And so, so the plan, what we're looking at is, we've done some research in respect to what do other bylaws look like. And, you know, I don't want to say without having voted, but we're leaning in the direction of a. but we're leaning in the direction of a complete rewrite. I'm going to try to get on the, depending on timing, on the next planning board meeting, which is actually the day before our next IDC meeting, so it may be the, the meeting afterwards. But really to go through, um, more or less a project timeline, right? And, and kinda map out what, what we as the IDC are willing to do, how we need, um, the planning board support. And then as well, um, looking to get on FinCom's calendar, too, to have the same discussion with them, so that, that we have, um, I guess, solidarity and, and a good understanding of it. And then we've talked about info sessions and how we would hold those. Um, and I think that we'll probably do a little different than most, but, um, you know, we can share that later on. But it, it, we're moving in the right direction. Our target is at the April Town meeting, if not earlier, if something were to present itself.
And, um, something else, um, came up with one of the companies when we're talking about, you know, the value of a license and the host agreement we signed with them. They were asking, well, are you gonna put a limit on how many will be issued in your town?
Yeah. So I actually wanna, I wrote that question down when we were going through all the, of the other licenses, because they're typically a percentage of the alcohol licenses. How many do, how many alcohol licenses do we have?
Well, it's a percentage, I think it's a percentage of the package store licenses.
Just package?
And we only have nine.
Okay.
So...
But it, but it's, uh, I think the CCC, it, the recommendation is you have to have at least this many per year, the number of...
Right. So for us, the at least would be one, based on the amount of package stores, so...
So we...
Just be, just be thinking about, like, I, I would think, like, a town this size, the maximum would probably be three, but that's just off the top of my head.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think we can have some discussion, and I think the board, I think, I think we have ultimate, really, decision on that. But I think we can have that discussion on the IDC, too. I mean, there are, there are a variety of, of different, um, typed, not types, but they are types, right, where...
Classifications.
Yes. Where they, they could be a little different, but I think it's a good, it's a good discussion to have.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, discussion and/or revote on remote participation? Um, I, so just because we're missing...
Yeah.
Mary and, um, you know, Brad, I, I think I wouldn't really wanna put it up for vote, but if we're, if someone wants to discuss it, I'm glad to.
What was, what was this for? 'Cause I...
I think just showing where we are compared, or where the town is.
Yeah, just showing where you are. So I gave you a list of, uh, the assessors. The Charter Commission have voted, um, yes to, uh, using remote participation. Community preservation and Board of Health, no. Industrial development and planning, yes. Parks and recreation, water and sewer, no. Um, and zoning board has voted yes.
And, and have we, um, or just at least in preparation for a meeting with more attendees, have we collected, um, the required signatures? Like, I see on, on the one here, we got it from the zoning board of appeals. We got it from the chair, but we actually need it from all members?
Yeah.
Is that in the works?
I, I checked with Paul today. I don't know whether he told me he had it or he's getting it, so... And you still have to vote, right? You are...
Yeah, we haven't voted.
No, we don't, we don't have to.
Right.
Um, Mike, can we, on the Board of Selectmen website, can we get a list of all of the groups who have voted? And, and how they voted? And I think that would help us. I mean, I know they have a requirement to put in their agenda that remote participation may occur, but I think that would help us with open meeting law, too, for people to understand where, where that might take place. Can we, can we start doing that? And that'll just kinda help us, like, a checks and balance of...
Yeah.
What's where?
Do we know if anybody's used it since the planning board?
Planning has.
Okay.
Has Charter? No.
Town manager's report. Mike?
Elm Street, um, they had their pre-construction meeting, um, on Monday, and they've started mobilizing down there now. So hopefully, uh, next week, they'll start on the demo.
Pre-destruction meeting?
What, pre-destruction meeting, I guess that would be...
Do they know how long the demo's gonna take?
Um, it, probably two to three weeks. And the Blue Star, um, you know, they've started the work on, uh, East Main Street. And I did speak with the chief today, and they were, he contacted, uh, the company. And, um, my question was, can they put another sign down here at Pine Street, letting people know the road's open to local businesses? Because we don't want the businesses, like, across the street, being affected. People think they can't come down to those businesses. And they said they have a, a sign on site, they believe, and they'll have it up tomorrow. And, um, so the traffic is being detoured. The chief, the police chief said today that, uh, from like eight to three every day, uh, when they're working, the traffic's being detoured.
And, and are they doing it at eight o'clock? 'Cause I did send you a message about that when it came out, showing seven forty-five.
Yeah, he told me they start, they go down there at seven forty-five, but they don't start the detour till eight o'clock, he told me today, so...
Okay. And then, um... I had a question on that.
So I heard, based on Chief Clark's email, that the first few days went smooth by the LG and, for the afternoon. I saw something today that it was very busy in the afternoon. So I think that's just a situation we need to continue to monitor, if traffic gets worse.
That was my, that's actually my question. Um, Mike, there's some information on the Town Clerk Facebook page of the detours, but I think it's only posted for Leonard Street, so can we get the...
Sure.
The rest of it up there? And I don't know, I don't know who provided that, but it looks, it looks good. I think, um, it's showing and outdated maybe now. As of a couple of days ago, I didn't, I haven't looked at it today. But I think that's a good place. I know, Jack, you, um, pointed some people there who had some concerns about it. The other thing, too, is we had a couple notifications that were sent out on that. And it looked like the second one came out to say it wasn't the water sewer work, it was condine? So somebody sent out notifications?
Yeah, I got two the other day. I might have had the text messages as well. But from a, a point of frustration, I think that I first saw that the work was gonna get done at about 10 o'clock the night before it started. So I think having some advance notice would have been helpful to help communicate that out, instead of people waking up in the morning and realizing that traffic flow is wildly different than when they went to bed.
And the other thing they did on that notification, it just said that the road was being closed.
Closed, right. It sounded like it was a permanent closure with no time.
Right. And it, it didn't say that you could travel westbound on it.
Right.
So who's in charge of communicating that type of stuff out? Because that's one thing that I think we really need to...
That was put up by Norton Emergency Management, so Chief Clark contacted and they have to change that.
So when in terms of condine letting us know when they're doing the work, can we get a bit more notice? Just so we can, you know, tell people?
Well, we had it. I mean, we approved it. They said they were starting next week, but we didn't, yeah, we didn't do, we didn't do anything about it.
We knew Leonard, Leonard Street was starting, and then when I, we talked on Veteran's State Parade, we didn't know when they were gonna start the easement portion.
So, so can we use, um, you know, detour's gonna change, right, from Pine Street and Plain Street to Plain and Burt, right? Once they move past South Washington?
Yeah.
So can we plan a notification at least two days prior with the times, as you suggested, and, and just, you know, maybe just ask somebody to review it? I'll certainly be around if they wanna second set of eyes on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
On, um, the West Main Street sewer project, they're done for the winter. Their permit doesn't allow them to extend any new trenches after November 15th. So, um, they're just clearing up whatever they have there, and then they'll have to wait until the spring to start again on that.
Do they have a date in the spring that they can resume?
I don't know. I'll find out, but...
It'd probably depend on the weather, but...
And are they still doing those, um, bi-weekly meetings? I'm assuming they're wrapping up for the winter.
Yeah.
But getting those updates was very helpful, understanding...
I haven't had any of them in a while. I'll, I'll get them.
Okay, and then the Carol advertising?
Um, yeah, they've, uh, signed agreements to, uh, lease two sites, um, 176 South Washington and 2-6 Lopes Drive for digital signboards. So they'll have, now have to go to the planning board and go through the process.
Are these the dual signboards?
Say that again.
Dual?
Yeah.
What was the address?
176 South Washington and 2-6 Lopes Drive. They're budding properties. Excuse me.
Is that any different than what we initially saw from them?
No. More or less the same area. They just weren't sure where they were gonna...
Yeah, recognize the South Washington address, the Lopes Drive.
Did we skip an item?
Yeah, we did. We skipped, uh, reporting Massachusetts OSHA.
Yeah, we were visited, uh, last week by the Massachusetts Occupational Safety and Health Inspector. And said they'll have a report for us in a couple of weeks. They were here for, like, five or six hours, looking at the building, and then meeting with, uh, reps from the unions after that. So I expect to get some concerns out of there.
Wouldn't be surprised.
What's that?
Wouldn't be surprised.
Do we know what triggered the inspection?
I, I don't. They wouldn't tell me, uh, um, they were contacted, but it's like the whistleblower, uh, they won't.
That, that's what I assumed, someone picked up the phone?
Yeah.
Oh, we should've had him in here a long time ago.
Should've.
Thanks, Mike. Under Selectmen's report in mail, Mr. Conway?
Uh, nothing new for me.
Ms. Deli?
Uh, I have a couple questions that, um, went around in email, I think. So one was in respect to the Wheaton and Board of Selectmen liaison. Do we have a liaison assigned right now, Wheaton?
Nothing I'm aware of. No?
Okay, what would be the process? We vote for someone?
Um, I don't think we have to vote for it. Do we? Do we vote for liaisons?
It's up to you. It's up to you guys. Was Mary here?
Oh, you know what?
I, I mean, I don't wanna take any actions or rebrand that, but...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But can we plan to put it on the next agenda? And then if...
I do think you're right. I think it was Mary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get that on agenda.
And then, um... So that water vending unit, I know I asked, uh, Mike, I, I think you were on this email about, you know, Frank relates some concerns about not having staff to kinda monitor it. Is that something that you have some folks here that can do, especially as we kinda head into winter?
Yeah.
Just to, to take a peek every couple of days and make sure it looks like it's in working order, or you can try it out? Just, it seems like it's failing more often lately. And then, I don't think I saw this on yours. Um, quickly, you had mentioned, you know, we, we talked about as part of, um, I wanna say a FinCom meeting, you know, we brought up about, oh, it was FinCom meeting, then we had the discussion here about looking at operational expenses across the schools and the, the town buildings. What's the status of that? I know that you had mentioned that you had a meeting with James and Joe and...
We, we met James, Joe, Matt, myself. And Joe said he was waiting for some information from NESDAQ. And then when we have the joint meeting, it'll be something that we could talk about there.
Okay. And then are, are you getting information for the town buildings? What our operational expenses are for...
I can do that.
Yeah.
I thought that was a part of it, so...
Anything else?
No.
Actually, I have one, one thing I forgot. So I was at a, um, BellRica Selectmen's meeting earlier this week, and one of the things that they, they do at the beginning, I thought was interesting, was, uh, sort of an open mic. So it was the first five or 10 minutes of the meeting, people could come in and just voice any concerns that they had, uh, without the assumption that any action's gonna get taken. I just kinda wanna get your feel for if you think that's something that, that we should adopt.
Yeah, that can be difficult to control.
Yep.
And so, um, I, it's something I would definitely consider, and, yeah.
Maybe pilot it for a little while.
Yeah.
I, I understand the concern. No one wants to get yelled at.
Well, no, I don't mind that, but it's just a matter of the duration of being yelled at, because we have other business to attend to as well. I mean, people can call and get on the agenda, and the other concern that I would have is that, um... You, we, we have post requirements. We've gotta get things out and, and, um...
It's listed on their agenda as, as an open mic. The way it seemed to work is that whoever had an intention to speak had reached out earlier, so that their, um, their secretary was able to call them to the mic to, to share their, their piece. And it was very...
So they had to call in ahead of time, so it can't be just a deli counter with taking them? Okay. Well, yeah, that sounds better.
Yep.
Okay.
Mike, I, Mike, there'd be Del just being able to go to BellRica.
Excellent.
Want me to get any information from your own towns that do it?
Yeah, if you could, just, or, or even, if, if you could ask the manager of BellRica to send us just a example agenda, that would be good.
They had a couple of interesting things on there. They also do, uh, like, workshop sessions. I was gonna talk to them and see about what actually that is. But I think that the example of the tax classification seems like something that could be more of a workshop thing. It's still publicly posted. I don't know how attended it is, but I think there's some interesting things that we could try to do.
Sure. Anything else?
Uh, no, so do we wanna adopt a open mic? Or is that something we...
I'd, no, I definitely would want to see a little bit more than also have the, yeah, at least Mary or, or, you know, Brad.
Do you have John's email, Mike?
Send it, yeah.
Uh, John Curran is the town manager?
But I think we should put that on a future agenda to, to discuss. So Dr. Biata had reached out to ask if we could do a joint meeting on 12/19 instead of 12/5? I cannot make that date.
I cannot either.
Okay, so that's a no. So...
What about the week before? I mean, just, can, can we propose some dates back to them while we're here? I mean, knowing that Mary's not here and we'd have to go out, but... Is there anything completely off?
It gets to be a pretty dicey time of year.
What do you mean, with Christmas and...
Right.
A year and objectives? Come on.
Right.
That's what, that's why I'm wondering, can we pull it back? Or even, I mean, what was the fifth? Was that a Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, I'm, I'm not opposed to meeting another night if... The group's available, the groups. Is this a joint with just, uh, school committee and Board of Selectmen or FinCom?
No, FinCom, school committee and...
I think the PBC was attending, intending to show up as well. Yeah, I can do another day of the week. I could do... I don't think I could do the 12th. Does the 5th no longer work?
Not for them. Joey had something.
So the 9th is the open forum session that they have. Tuesday, the 10th?
I can't do the 10th.
Wednesday, the 11th?
Would work for me.
Potential?
Potential.
And, oh, I just flipped my calendar.
12th isn't, no, definitely not the 13th.
I could do Tuesday the 17th.
I could do Tuesday the 17th. So let's offer 12/11, 12/17.
Okay.
And then, you know, it's, it's tough to coordinate this many people.
12/12? 12/12, Mike?
12/11?
Nope.
12/17.
Yep.
Okay, the last thing I have is to, I just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Hope everyone is, has a great day and safe day. I want some minutes. Report Vice Chairman Mike Florida on the filing payroll and invoice warrants. Approved, approved payroll warrant PR 20-10 for the weekend in November 2, no, 2, I almost said 19, 2019. Warrant dated November 7, 2019, the amount of $1,439,421.77. Approved invoice warrant AP 20-19 dated November 7, 2019, in the amount of $443,834.79. Approved invoice warrant AP 2020 dated November 14, 2019, the amount of $571,608.3. I approved payroll warrant PR 20-11 for the weekend in November 16, 2019, warrant dated 20, uh, November 21, 2019, the amount of $1,384,520.66. And I approved invoice warrant AP 20-21 dated November 21, 2019, in the amount of
What was driving the size of that one?
Did you think you grabbed it?
Nope.
You didn't?
No.
Yeah, yeah, that was. Couple water issues, and then 1.2 million just coming from the general fund, so for a bunch of, what is it, payroll coming out of the general fund? That's, that's a payroll warrant. That's why. I'll look into the 1.4, I don't remember the top of my head. I don't see it in there, though.
There should be two in there.
Oh, yeah, sorry. You're right. Been a long day. So, $528,000 to the windows for the schools, $201,000 to the, to the water enterprise, and then 42, roughly $43,000 to the circuit breaker.
Thanks, Mike.
Do we have minutes to approve?
Do we have what?
I don't think so.
Just, no.
We have a lot of minutes that we have to approve, but we don't have any listed on here.
Right.
We need to regroup on this and make them, we definitely need to get these out.
Yep, we do. Okay, um, next meeting's agenda, so our next meeting is set for December 5. We have to set the spring annual town meeting date. Anything else, please just email me and get it on there. Anything else that's come before the board?
You will get two things from me for the, the meeting next week in respect to the town meeting. I mean.
I'm sorry, can I say that?
For the agenda, for our next agenda.
Okay.
In respect to the town meeting and priorities.
Seeing nothing, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
For adjourned.